And we are at the regular schedule Granberry City Council meeting. We are located at Granberry City Hall, 116 West Bridge Street, Granberry, Texas, 76048. And I want to remind people that you can watch this meeting live at www.granberry.org/live. I will find out later how many people are online, but I was online with the Commissioners' Court last week or two weeks ago because I was out of town, and there were 83 people online watching the Commissioners' Court. So hopefully we have as good attendance because one of the things that we know for sure is the more involvement that we have from the citizens, the better decisions that we're able to make and the better decisions that we make for the citizens with their input. So, thank you. So I'm gonna go ahead and stop that and go ahead and call the meeting to order, and we will begin with the invocation. If you are ready, young lady, we will do it.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for being such a good Father. We thank you for your grace, your mercy, and your love that you pour out of your children each day. Father, we thank you for each person that's here. We thank you for the city council people, Father, and the support staff that's here. Father, we ask that you give them wisdom and discernment and lead them and guide them in the decisions that they make. Father, I ask that you be with each citizen that's here, Lord. Father, I thank you for them. I thank you that they are interested in what's going on in their city and their government. And Father, I just ask that you be with them and that you protect and that you guide them. Father, Holy Spirit, we ask that you come and you just invade this space. And Father, we ask that you do give wisdom to each decision that's made, Father. We ask that you bless this time that we have together, Lord. And Father, we just want to honor you in the things that we do and the things that we say. We just leave these prayers at your feet tonight, Lord, and we say thank you for answered prayer. In Jesus's name, amen.
Those kind and uplifting words are from Reverend Diane Raspberry of the Hope Community Church. Thank you. You'll join us in the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On Texas flag, on Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Okay, we will move to number four, which is proclamation and presentation. Tonight, we have a recognition of the Granberry Athletic Association. If you guys will come up front, they will be donating a new scoreboard valued at $7,180 to be used at Granberry Park City Baseball and Softball Complex. Aaron is gonna come forward as well. Oh, look at this.
So this check represents some funds that were donated to the city for us to buy a scoreboard for the city park. And these gentlemen are with Granberry Athletic Association. For those who don't know, they work with young men and young ladies for baseball and softball. Are you doing basketball again now?
Yes.
Basketball also. And the city gets to work with them pretty close for the fields. They use our athletic facilities, and they're great to give back over the years. They've donated other funds for scoreboards. We've worked together to build batting cages. And it's important to realize, they're not the only people to use the facilities. Even though they're buying a scoreboard, other teams and organizations get to use that facility as well. It doesn't just benefit them. And also, you know, these guys are volunteers, so I would urge all the parents to keep that in mind. They're volunteering their time so this can happen for the youth. If they didn't step up, it might even be where the city had to entertain doing more for the youth. And I'm perfectly happy with great volunteers like these guys stepping up. Anything y'all want to say?
No.
All right. Well...
So this is... This will be our fourth scoreboard in the last three years that we've been able to donate to. Part of that is because of the community. It's donations that have been given to us, and we've been able to kind of turn them around and use them. And again, like you said, it is for the kids in our community, and that's what we want to do, our part, to help take care and maintain the fields so that the city can also take and use funds for other things. So, that's why we're here.
We appreciate it very much. There you go.
Oh, I just want to say thank you. You set the example. Thank you so much. And you guys?
Shake his hand?
Oh, wow! Wow! What a grip! Oh, another grip!
Thank you all.
Thank you, Bob. Thank you, Aaron.
Thank you all.
All right, we're gonna move to 4.2, City Council, City Manager to Issue Encouraging Statements and Recognize City Staff.
Mayor, if you don't mind, I'll brag a little bit.
Go right ahead.
So this morning, as I was headed to the office, I saw a dead raccoon. And, you know, I thought, I need to let somebody know about that. And I got busy when I got to the conference center. There was activities down there I needed to be at. And it's gone, so I didn't have to do anything. And it kind of reinforces what Mary Ellen was telling me about. Somebody came into the visitor center last week and was bragging about how clean our city is. And there's a lot of moving parts that make that happen. And I want to recognize the people that are doing that. You know, the Parks Department, the Street Department, Animal Control, always picking up litter, always picking up things. Other departments, as they see things, address it as well. And it's not uncommon to see somebody walking into this building, they'll stop and pick up a piece of litter that works here. So hats off to the staff that do that, and I just want to thank y'all for everything. Also, I'd like to mention that, you know, we want to recognize our police department for the outstanding service they provide. Day in and day out, they're interacting with the public, you know. Sometimes they have to write a citation. Most of the times, they write a warning. We don't want to let that secret get out, though. But we are very sensitive to that, and Mitch and his crew do a great job for us providing police. Just like today on the intersection of Pearl Street and Crockett, they were having to exercise a little police investigative tools on a vehicle on the side of the road and taking care of that. Just driving by that gave me a sense of peace, that regardless of what's going on, we've got people working around the city to keep us safe. And that's invaluable. And so, thank you, Mitch. Thank you, team. You guys are awesome. I'm so proud we've got you in a new facility. And if you haven't seen the new facility, drive out on the loop and stop and take a look. And ask for a tour. Maybe they'll let you in. I don't know. It depends on your background check. But we do want to encourage the public to know what we've got and the resources that have been provided by the taxpayers for this department. So, thank you. Thank you, taxpayers, for supporting the police so well.
Chris, don't forget that shameless plug of this weekend, Great Granberry Cleanup.
Oh, yeah. Great Granberry Cleanup is this weekend, weather permitting. We are hearing that there's gonna be a big rain event. We're waiting to see. We're gonna have to make a decision at some point on that. But if you'd like to help do a litter pickup, we're gonna meet here at City Hall at 8:00 on Saturday morning. We're looking for volunteers. We've had up to 70 to 125 volunteers in the past, and the more people we have, the quicker we get finished. And we go around and pick up litter. And what a great contribution the volunteers do. Rotary Club's been very active in that in the past, and we hope to get another Rotary team. Last weekend, Michael Ross, Deputy City Manager, and some students from the school picked up litter all around the campus of Granberry ISD High School. So, they did a bunch of stuff for about four hours over there, and I don't know how much trash was gathered, but there was a bunch of litter that was picked up, and it pays off in the end. So, every little bit that happens makes a huge difference in our community. So, thank y'all, if y'all are the ones picking up trash as well. And come see us. That's all I've got, Mayor.
I'm sure that's all you choose to share. There's a heck of a lot more that you could be talking about with this group. Council, down here? No? Well, I'm gonna brag on the council and city manager just a little bit. We often are going through the agenda items here, and we will move through them very quickly. And I think some people may get the impression that, oh, they're not discussing that at all. Well, that's not the case. It's being discussed with the city manager. He provides time to small groups. In other words, no quorum would be at the meeting. But he provides time to make sure that that happens. And then, the city manager and council also provide time to make sure that we, the city of Granberry, are represented in our state legislation when there are bills that are being put forth that would have either a positive effect or a detrimental effect on the city of Granberry. And over the last two weeks, Mr. Obadiah, Mr. Wadley, Mr. Kaufman, and myself, because they needed supervision, were in Austin and lobbying for these bills, both of these types that they were actually testifying. And I will have to say that the city of Granberry was extremely well represented by the council here and by the city manager. And there have been some changes to one of the bills. We haven't seen the last one. The last one was a doozy. But we're waiting on that, and I think you should rest assured, too, that there will continue to be action down there when there are bills that will be effective in the city of Granberry. And it seems like the state is just very insistent on helping us run the city, which is somewhat annoying and sometimes very disturbing. So with that, thank you. And by the way, just because I didn't mention the other council members, doesn't mean that they aren't backing that same effort, and they'll be down there as needed as well, if needed. And then you have to have somebody that stays back here to make sure that all the work gets done. So, thank you all. Appreciate it.
I might just add one more thing.
Mr. Kaufman?
Just to add to that layer of work that's going on, not only did the three of y'all join and get me to go as well, but the others read the information that we're discussing and understand what's being said and what's being done and understand the gravity of the situation. And so, while these bills are punitive to Granberry in many cases, it's unintended consequences from what they're trying to address somewhere else in most cases. And then there's some other bills, Senate Bill 19, for instance, that is very detrimental to every city in Texas and every county in Texas and every ISD in Texas. So, we'll see if they pass that. They may, the governor so insistent on it, they may have special sessions through the summer on it if they don't do something. So, anyway, it's a tumultuous time, and state governments and local governments are certainly in peril while they're in session. So, put us in your prayers.
And I would comment that you, too, are invited to the Capitol. You, too, are invited to go down and testify and speak up at these meetings of things that affect you. And if you, you know, look for any kind of direction or, I guess, to, you know, just help us in identifying those bills that you would like to go down and talk, you know, where do you go? How do you get there? What do you do once you're there? Just, you know, pick up the phone and call any of the council, myself or Chris, and we'll certainly help you do that because it is, it is the citizens down there that they listen, they listen to. They listen to you quicker than just about anybody else. So, thank you. Other comments? Okay. All right. I'm gonna move on to five public comments on agenda items. Ms. Walker? We have no one that's signed up, so I won't read all of that. Go to the consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are routine or previously discussed items and will be approved with one motion. However, should a member of the city council wish to discuss any item, said item may be removed from the consent agenda and considered under deliberation agenda. Councils, anybody want to take anything off and consider it?
Mr. Mayor? I don't want to take anything off, but I didn't know if maybe we wanted to show on the screen a picture of those boxes for the audience?
That'd be great. Boxes?
The art boxes?
I don't know if they have that available. Do you have that available?
It's on the agenda.
I don't know if she can pull that up.
Take a moment.
Drive. Like, two minutes or three or five?
Five.
Okay. All right. Anyway.
Chris, I have a printed copy.
She's got a printed copy. That sounds obvious.
Well, anybody can go online and see the agenda, and you can pull it up off the agenda. But they're really beautiful boxes, and I'm not sure when they're gonna be done, but there's two locations now that they'll be done, so hopefully we'll get dozens more in the city.
Ah, yeah.
And you can get them done at your house if you want.
And there's an opportunity to sponsor one of these boxes. So, we're using sponsors to do this. It's beautification for traffic signal boxes along the highways. So, and electric transformers, if the electric company will let us do it. Anyway, we can do it on ours, for sure.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to pass the consent agenda as written?
So moved.
For both, Mr. Obadiah, second?
Second.
Okay. Mr. Allen makes second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. I hear none ayes. We'll move to the deliberation agenda, 7.1. Consider awarding Texas Chili, Inc. for the Elizabeth Boulevard and Penrod Drive waterline improvements and authorizing the city manager to execute a contract in the amount of $929,870 to include 15% contingency fund and consider approving the use of combination tax and revenue certificate Series 2022 to fund the waterline improvement project. Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you, Mayor. Y'all are well aware of this need, and we finally got to the point where we can award a contract. And so, I'll turn it over to Chris Hay to walk you through that. He did the engineering and the bidding and prepared the bid summary letter, and as you see, it's awarded at those prices. Chris, you want to add anything to that?
Good evening, Council. Chris Hay with EHT. Good evening, Council. Chris Hay with EHT. We did open bids and received nine bids for this project, so there's a lot of interest. We're happy with the number of bids we received here. The low bidder was Texas Chili Incorporated. They've worked for the city before on a drainage project, on the Woods Apartments project. So, we reviewed their bids and are recommending moving forward with award to Texas Chili in the amount of $929,870. So, if there's any questions or anything I can add to that, I'm happy to do that.
Mayor?
Yeah, I got a couple of questions. Thank you for... First question, nine bids.
Yes, sir.
Is that unusual?
Yes, we're happy with three. We're really happy with four, five, and with nine. Nine's a lot of participation, so we're happy to see that.
What does that tell you?
Either they're excited about the project or there's time available for nine contractors to work on it, so...
Okay. Well, I think they just want to work with the city of Granberry because it's great.
That's a better answer. I'll go with Allen.
I just want to say kudos to both you and the staff here at the city of Granberry. Chris, thank you for trying to figure things out on how to fund this need on the waterline improvement. But my next question is, how long is this gonna take?
So, their contract is gonna be 120 days to final completion. So, we're hoping to get started. Contracts have to be executed, and that takes some time to get bonds finished. We're hoping to maybe issue the notice to proceed this month, either the 21st or the 28th, depending on how fast we can get those contracts executed. With a 120-day contract period, that would put completion by the end of August. So, that's the timeframe we're looking at on this project, pending any delays.
Any impact to the citizens that are on this waterline?
There's gonna be some service impact. It'll be minimal. There'll be probably six to eight tie-ins that will have some temporary shutdowns tying into existing waterlines. The biggest impact's just gonna be construction traffic and local traffic on the streets, just working around the construction equipment. The line's gonna be installed in, under pavement in the street, so there will be some impact locally there. But that's just with any other construction project.
All right. Thank you.
Might want to add that you've added a penalty if they exceed the 120 days, excluding rain days and holidays. So, could you explain what that fee is?
Yeah, so liquidated damages are part of the contract. Those will be $500 per day if they exceed the substantial completion or final completion dates. So, we work with, we will be inspecting the job. We have an inspector on the job that'll be supervis, not supervising, but witnessing and representing the city during construction. So, we'll work with them on any claims or delays for weather, and those will be approved as the contract goes. But pending any weather delays, like Mr. Kaufman said, there will be a $500 per day liquidated damages as a standard for city construction contracts.
Thank you, Chris.
Yeah, so maybe we can just go ahead and schedule late June. You come back and just give us an update?
That'd be fine. I'm happy to update you whenever you're ready.
Great. Great. Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. More? Other questions?
So, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Rodriguez?
So, I think 7.5's gonna answer a lot of the questions that Eddie asked as well about how it's gonna impact the people that live there, so that might help clear up some of the issues that maybe people have.
All right. Do I hear a motion to award Texas Chili, Inc. for the Elizabeth Boulevard and Penrod Drive waterline improvements and authorize the city manager to execute a contract of the amount of $929,870 to include 15% contingency fund and consider approving the use of combination tax and revenue certificate Series 2022? Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Wadley makes a motion?
Second.
Mr. Rodriguez, second? Do you second or Mr. Corrigan? Mr. Corrigan, second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. That will pass 6-0.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Appreciate it. We will move to 7.2. 7.2 is a public hearing, so after the staff provides the input to this, we'll allow anybody that needs to, wants to, speak at that point in time. So, it is to consider adopting ordinance number 25-13, approving the request of Doak Ralston to change zoning from interim holding district to light commercial district, and ordinance number 25-14 approving a specific use permit for a convenience store with gas pumps in light commercial zoning. The property is located at 1400 Paluxi Road. And this will be Z-2024-17 and SUP-2024-16. Mr. Kaufman?
I'd like to turn it over to Community Development Director Kara Wawee to walk you through these following items related to the planning and zoning. Thank you, Kara.
Thank you. So, our location map is our first slide in the presentation, and you can see the blue outline on the map. This is a site that is unimproved at the southwest corner of 377 and Paluxi. Recently, the mapping has shown Paluxi under the street named Pirate. Sometimes that happens as development goes along, that there's some mapping adjustments. So, the site has two components, 2.786 acres, which is what's shown in that blue outline is subject to the zoning change request. Half of that property, 1.415 acres, is requested for the SUP convenience store with fuel pumps, gas pumps. And currently, they're going through a plat review as well. As a reminder, plats are now administrative. The zoning change would be to light commercial, within which that district requires the SUP. And you can see on the map, there is a surrounding context. To the south and east is undeveloped property. To the west is tractor supply, commercial, and to the north is a church and also undeveloped property. So, this just shows the existing zoning. Existing is interim holding. It's intended to remain as undeveloped until development comes along, and that's what we're looking at with the proposed zoning of light commercial. Now, the comprehensive future land use map shows retail office to which the light commercial zoning district is intended, so that's fitting. Again, this is the location for the SUP. The applicant has shared out that the intended user is a 7-Eleven. This is the site plan, so you can see there the overall property for zoning, and it's split down the half, half of the site on the right-hand side, on the hard corner, is where the convenience store and the fuel pumps would be located. Access to the site would be from 377 with a shared access drive to tractor supply, and that is an existing shared access today. Then the access would continue through the west portion to the SUP site. And the gas canopies would be in front of the convenience store facing onto 377, and the drivers could exit to the east to Paluxi Road. And a future connection would be provided to the south to the currently undeveloped property. There is an existing moratorium for the, moratorium agreement for the property, and they would be providing a septic. It allows that to be on the portion of the site to the west. Let's see. The elevations are shown just for informational purposes, so you get an idea of what the building would look like, standard convenience store construction. The specific use permit criteria for determining the validity of an SUP includes five criteria, whether the surrounding area is harmonious and compatible for the proposed use, and it is, as stated previously, commercial, retail, and undeveloped land, and it is planned for future commercial retail type of activity. Are the activities requested associated with the description of the request, and they are? And what is the nature of the use? Is it reasonable? A reasonable use for the convenience store with gas pumps is this property. There aren't any of these uses nearby. The closest gas station is off of 377 and Waters Edge Drive. There's a couple of gas stations over there, as well as one that doesn't have frontage on the corner, but a little ways to the west. And then there are regulations that would need to be conformed to, and fees have been paid. With this change, the SUP will be harmonious with the intent of the current businesses in the area and the future planned uses. And this site is currently undeveloped. Adequate provision of improvements will be made when it is developed. The SUP, the specific use permit, conditions may be recommended imposed. These are recommended by P&amp;Z as well as staff. And these are standard criteria referring back to the zoning ordinance and the city code requirements. We provided public notice in both the newspaper as well as letters to surrounding property owners, and we have not received anything back in either opposition or in favor of the proposal. Staff recommends approval of the light commercial zoning with no conditions, and staff recommends approval of the SUP with these conditions that are on your screen, as well as in your staff report. That is, the first one, that the use is limited to the, for the SUP, the convenience store with gas pumps, that the site will conform to the site plan contained in Exhibit B. Parking, maneuvering, and display and storage should be on an improved surface. And the other two are standard conditions that speak to city code and requirements for things like inspections. Planning and zoning commission again recommended approval by a vote of 5-0 with conditions recommended by staff. And these are your voting options. First slide is for the zoning change, and then I have a slide for you, too, on the SUP. Thank you. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
There, I have one.
Go ahead.
Kara, on this Pirate Drive, when we talked to the owner of the property currently, we were talking about when he develops this entire track, he's gonna need to upgrade Pirate Drive.
Uh huh.
Now, is he selling this land to this company, and should we get something in escrow for those improvements for their responsibility there? What's the plan there?
So, with the... So with the plat, those improvements would be required for their portion of the property that fronts onto Private Pirate Drive, and that's part of the plating. They'll be making some improvements.
So they will improve it now? Is that what you're saying?
With that development.
Okay, good deal. I just didn't know. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Woodley?
Yeah, Kara, what is proposed for the west portion of that property?
Right now, there's no development proposed, except for that access drive that would lead from the shared access with Tractor Supply over to the proposed convenience fuel pumps.
So they own the entire property, they just want to develop half of it right now?
That's, that's right.
Okay, thank you.
That would be a great spot for a pad site for a restaurant or fast food or something. I don't know what they're going to do, but it looks big enough to provide for something.
Yeah, I see the applicant might be here wanting to say something. I don't know if I spoke in error or not, but he's welcome to make a correction if need be.
Good evening, Council. My name's Doak Ralston. I'm with Darwood Partners. We're the developer of the project, and I'm happy to-
Let me open the public hearing, okay? Do we have other questions for Kara?
Mayor.
Mr. Allo?
Yes, I just wanted to know, does the proposed building exceed the 300 feet that needs to be away from a church if it's going to be selling alcohol?
I'm not aware that it's going to be selling alcohol, but as, as a point of reference, that's reviewed under a separate review that comes from the state.
Good question. Others? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. Yes, sir. I like your enthusiasm.
Yeah, apologize for that. Again, my name's Doak Ralston. I'm with Darwood Partners. We're the developer of the project, and would happy, be happy to answer any of those questions that you had. One of them was the, what's going to happen with the adjacent land? For now, it, the whole property will be platted as one lot with a septic system on that area up until such time that that moratorium is lifted. And then, and once that is gone, we would then come and demolish the septic system, replat that lot, and from the interest that we've had, there's been strong interest for restaurant uses and a coffee shop. You know, these will be hopefully later on this year, but those are the, that's the interest that we have as of now. And to answer your question about the alcohol sales, usually that's measured 300 feet door to door as you walk, so we would meet that requirement. And I'm happy to answer any other questions you might have.
Go ahead.
Doak, do you have a feel for when you would need to tie into the city sewer, in relation to when your project's going to be ready for sewer?
Yeah, it's a great question. We're, I'm thinking, as of now, we still have to do full set of plans, submittal, right? And we still have to close on the property, so I would think we're probably not going to start construction until September, August or September of this year.
Well, let me just offer this to you. Before you design and engage a septic system engineer, let's talk, because we may be lifting the moratorium before March 1st. We don't know yet.
Right.
But we've got to see the capacities that we're running at our existing plant and know all the vested projects and where they're at with the capacity coming online, and we may be able to eliminate that need for that septic project.
Correct, yeah. And I think it'll just be an ongoing, you know, discussions with staff.
Thanks for working with us on this.
Yeah, absolutely. But, you know, we have fully, we fully intend to design that system if need be, especially during the plan review phase.
So if you, if you begin construction, what month did you say? August, June, July?
Probably, yes. It obviously depends on review timeline of all the plans and everything like that.
And how long is the construction period for 7-Eleven?
About 200 days.
Okay, so it'd be pretty close.
It would be very close.
So let's, let's work on that. I hate for you to spend money with a septic design team and then not need it, so.
No, we appreciate that.
We'll work with you. Thank you.
Very good. Other questions, Mr. Woodley?
Is Tractor Supply on a sewer line right now?
I believe they are.
And if so, that means the line already exists?
It does, yes, sir.
Okay. You've already investigated that.
We actually are, I will add, extending the utilities down Pirate Drive, both water and sewer, to the south.
To the south.
Through, on our, the frontage of our property up until then. And then subsequent development will obviously take that down further and further.
Okay.
One, one other thing I'd like to add is there were some comments about the improvements on Paluxi or Pirate Drive, and Tech Dot is coming in and doing those when they do the 377 expansion. Like I said, we are doing all the utility work, but I think there might be a scenario where whenever that takes place, they would be just ripping up whatever we put down. But I think, you know, as we go through, like I said, the permitting process, we can figure that out.
Thank you.
Other questions, Council? Thank you, appreciate it. Are there any, anyone else would like to make a public comment? I see no one. I see no hands, nobody's standing, so we will go ahead and close the public meeting portion of this action here. So, Council, other comments? No? Okay. We're going to do this in two, two motions. One of them will be the zoning change. So, do I hear a motion to adopt ordinance number 25-13 approving the request of Doak Ralston to change zoning from interim holding district to light commercial district? Mr. Rodriguez?
Mayor, so, so moved.
Second.
Mr. Oberdear makes a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. I hear no nays. That passes six and oh. Do I hear a motion to pass ordinance number 25-14 approving a specific use permit for convenience store with gas pumps in light commercial zoning? The property is located at 1400 Paluxi Road.
So moved.
Mr. Woodley?
Second.
Mr. Rodriguez makes a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. That will pass six and oh. Thank you, Mr. Paulson, appreciate your time. Mr. Ralston? Okay. We'll move to 7.3, also a public hearing. Consider adopting ordinance number 25-15 approving the request of Kimberly Niese Fuentes to change zoning on a portion of the property from industrial zoning district to single-family residential R-8.4. Property is located at 622 North Crockett Street. Mr. Kaufman?
Again, I'll turn it over to Ms. Wawee.
Thank you. This one is a zone change for a property that has misaligned zoning to their property boundaries, and the request is to zone the entire property for residential purposes R-8.4 district. The existing southern portion of the property holds the zoning of industrial. And you can see the property there is outlined in teal. To the south is a heavy commercial industrial type of activity. The subject property is however improved with a single-family residential dwelling, and to the west, north, and east are all residential uses. So this is the zoning map, so you can see the gray to the south is industrial, and that extends into the teal outline of the subject property. The deep yellow color represents R-8.4. And this next slide should be, yes, is, is the future land use map indicating a low-density residential recommendation, which is alignment with the proposed R-8.4 district. These are the considerations to, to make for a zoning change, and the request meets all of the criteria. The zoning would be appropriate. It's already residentially developed on the site. Since the property is already improved with the residence, there's no impact on school demand, and there's no new construction proposed. There's no impact on the city's facilities. They're all in place, and there was no need for a development agreement for the moratorium on this request. This change does represent a small increase in the overall supply of residential, if you look at the zoning quantity of, of land area, but it's, it's not anything substantial. And the properties in the area have developed, and the new zoning has not been occurring. So this is just a little cleanup for their properties so that they can continue to use it for residential and, and other purposes that are aligned with that zoning district. We mailed out 17 letters on February 27th, and we also advertised in the newspaper on February 22nd. We haven't received any input on this project. Staff is recommending approval of the zoning change. Your planning commission on March 10th also recommended approval by a vote of 5-0. And these are your voting options. If you have questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Council? Very clear. Thank you. Good explanation. I'll now open the meeting for a public meeting. Do we have anyone that would like to step up and speak about this item? I see no ones, so we will close the public meeting. Council, any other discussion? Do I hear a motion to adopt ordinance number 25-15 approving the request of Kimberly Niese Fuentes to change zoning on a portion of the property from industrial zoning district to single-family residential R-8.4? Property is located at 622 North Crockett Street.
So moved.
Mr. Oberdear?
Second.
And Mr. Corrigan makes a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. I hear none nays. That will pass six and oh. On 8.4, I want to announce that we have not received formal notice of an opening, so we will take no action tonight on 8.4.
7.4.
7.4 either. On 7.4. I get a lot of help. Thank you, guys. I do, I do appreciate it. We keep it straight that way. 7.5, consider authorizing the city manager to provide bottled water for drinking to the residents impacted by the Elizabeth Boulevard and Penrod Drive Water Line Improvements Project and provide a temporary waiver for the water portion of their utility bill effective their next billing cycle until the completion of the water line replacement on Elizabeth Penrod and other affected homes experience the discolored water from the old cast iron water lines. Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you, Mayor. As you know, you've seen photos of the discolored water, and I think it's on our responsibility to try to assist these folks through this process, and we would like to, you know, have the authority to provide the bottled water for drinking purposes, and also credit their water portion of their utility bill as soon as possible, moving forward until this project is complete. I don't know the cost of all that, but what does bottled water cost for 86 homes during the next 620 days, 150 days? I think that's kind of what you're looking at. So it depends on how many people live in each house and what their needs are. We'll need to find that out and work with that. So I don't have a fiscal impact for you, but I think we can absorb that with our existing budget, and if I need to, I'll come back with a budget amendment in the coming weeks when we determine if we need additional funding. But I really think it's important to work with our neighbors and at least get them something they can drink without having to buy that on their own, so. They've been through a lot. Happy to answer any questions. I do have a spreadsheet of the addresses and, from our utility billing, and also an overhead map, and you can see that there's an area in light green on that map that is going to be affected by the water as well. Possibly, we need to knock on their door and visit with them. So got a lot of talking to do if you approve this, and we'll get it rolling.
I think it's, you know, job well done again on the map and the listing, because that's, you know, the first question's going to be, am I included or am I excluded? And then, you know, I question, or, you know, it's a comment, I guess, what do you see as a unexpected consequence or something that may happen as a result of us passing something like this?
As I said in my memo, I, if we can waive their water portion of the bill, I'm going to encourage those citizens to water their grass and flush that line as much as possible through these next few months, so they'll have to mow their grass a little more than usual, but I feel like additional flushing would help. We're flushing it twice a day with a metered flush, but as these people are trying to wash clothes and stuff, the more you flush and have fresh water running through that pipe throughout the system, to where that corroded rusty water doesn't settle in the pipe, it keeps it moving, I think it would be beneficial. Now then, I say all that to say this, if we get into a situation where we're having a drought contingency plan, we would have to readdress that situation, but right now, this early in the, in the season, I think we're good to go. We've got the capacity, so that's what I would encourage. Just realize that's what we're going to do. Now, we're going to need the inventory and, and track for every gallon of water that goes through those meters and, and credit that to their account. And so with us flushing it twice a day, we're metering that, each, each homeowner, you know, watering their grass or whatever for free to help flush that line, to keep the water in it moving so it's not stagnant and allowing the rust to pollute it, there's, there's value to that, not only to them, but to us and to our system, to make sure that we are providing the best water possible to them for bathing and washing their clothes.
Okay. Mr. Rodriguez?
Mayor, thank you. Just for the rest of the council and the mayor and the city manager, you know, it's, it's, we, we have a designation for our water, and we need to live up to that designation as, you know, and for these people, they may seem that we're not living up to that designation of superior water service, especially during the last, however long they've had to endure this. In, in compensating them until we can install that new line is just a, a show of gratitude of what we're willing to do as the city staff and as a city council and the body, of the governing body, to, to help them. I've had reports where, you know, they can't wash clothes because it stains their clothes. They can't take showers because of the minerals that are in the water that, you know, when they take showers. So they're having to flush their lines, and when they're flushing their lines, it's a waste of water on their part. You know, we take it for granted, when we go art, to our house, we turn on the spigot and it's clean water. These residents haven't been experiencing that, and it's just something that we need to do to take care of this, this section of residents, is, we've already taken one action, 7.1 is to install the new water line. Taking this action would show that we're, we're going beyond, going above and beyond what we're required to do in order to compensate them and, and let them know that we're, we're trying to fix the issue.
Okay. Other comments? I want to thank Mr. Kaufman and the staff for bringing this to the council and letting us, you know, be a part of the process as it relates here. I think this is something that, yeah, we should all look at and, and say, yeah, this is something that we need to vote yea or nay on, so. Any other comments? Okay. Do I hear a motion to let the city manager provide the bottled water for drinking to the residents impacted by Elizabeth Boulevard and Penrod Drive Water Line Improvements Project and provide a temporary waiver for the water portion of their utility bill effective their next billing cycle until the completion of the water line replacement on Elizabeth Penrod and other affected homes experiencing the discolored water from the old cast iron water lines?
So moved.
Mr. Woodley makes a motion?
Second.
Mr. Corrigan? Was it Mr. Corrigan made the motion? Did you get that right, Ms. Walker and Ms. Corrigan? Made the motion? Mr. Oberdear made the second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. That will pass six and oh.
Council, on behalf of the citizens, we want to thank you.
Very good. Okay. We'll move to number eight. Citizen comments on matters not on the agenda. Ms. Walker has no one signed up, so we will now move into executive session where we will discuss on matters permitted by the following sections of the Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. 551071, consultation with attorney, pending or contemplated litigation. 551072, deliberation regarding real property. 551074, personnel matters, city manager compensation. 551087, deliberation regarding real property. Five-five-one-oh-eight-seven, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations. I now announce that we are into executive session. Thank you. It is now eight twenty-five on April the first, twenty twenty-five, and I now declare that the Grandberry City Council reconvenes into open session. There was no action taken in closed session, and all council members are present. Counsel, do we have any other business?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Wadley.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the city manager to execute an amendment with CJB Development LLC, applicable to the legacy ranch development agreement with the guidelines as set out in closed session.
Motion made. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Mr. Oberdear makes a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. I hear no nays. Motion passes six and oh. Mr. Wadley?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Wadley?
I'd like to make a motion to increase the city manager's base salary by nine point five percent effective April first, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Mr. Oberdear's second. Mr. Wadley made the motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. That will pass six and oh.
Thank you all very much.
Other business? There being no other business, I announce this meeting adjourned. Thank you.